All right, very good. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the City of Delray Beach's special meeting scheduled for Thursday, March 4th, 2021. This is a virtual meeting at 2:00 P.M. Please call the roll.
Mr. Frankel?
Present.
Ms. Cassell?
Here.
Mr. Ballston?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Mayor Petolia?
Here. Okay, this is the meeting that we are going to be discussing the fire contract. So who would like to begin? Oh, I'm sorry. First, we have got comments and inquiries on agenda, non-agenda item from the public. Do we have any public comments, Ms. Kateri?
No, we do not.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to item two, which is the approval of the collective bargaining agreement. Who would like to begin? And did we want to have a... Okay. Jennifer Alvarez, you can go ahead and start.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the title reflects, this is basically the approval of collective bargaining for the commission's consideration between the City of Delray Beach and the professional firefighters of Delray, which is AFAF 1842. As I did mention on Tuesday, when we established this time to have the meeting to consider this matter, we did have, and we do have, our actuary, the city's actuary is on the phone and prepared to present a component of this collective bargaining agreement, which is the drop and changes to the drop. They only have about 20 minutes to be available, so if you would like, it might be a little different, but we can go ahead. His name is Mr. Jeff Ambrose. He's with GRS, and he could be unmuted if IT could. And what we could do is either have him give the commission a very brief summary of the drop changes and then field any questions and answer any questions that you can have if that's the will of the commission.
Sure, I think that that's a good idea since we're limited on time. Is that is okay with everybody? I think so. So let's move forward with Mr. Ambrose.
Excellent. Thank you so much, and thanks for bearing with me on the phone instead of on video. So I do appreciate it. It's nice to be here with you. So what we were requested to measure the cost impact for was increasing the maximum drop period from five years to eight years. And the drop is the deferred retirement option program. If you need background on what that is, please let me know, and I could go into that. Maybe you already have the background on what that is. So when a member enters the current drop program, which again is only five years long, this is what happens. Their retirement benefit is calculated using the service and pay at that time. The firefighter who enters this drop agrees that they will terminate employment within the next five years. The member stops contributing to the pension plan. Currently, they contribute 9% of their pay to the pension plan to help fund their benefit. When they enter the drop, right now, again, a five-year drop, they stop contributing. And then also, in general, there's a cost of living adjustment. It's an increase each year, and it's on the benefits earned after October 4th, 2016. There's, in general, a one-year delay on that cost of living adjustment. So it increases by a percentage each year, but that increase doesn't start until a year after the member exits the drop. Again, right now, five years. So that's the current program. Let's discuss the proposed drop program. Under the proposed drop program, the retirement benefit will solely be calculated using service and pay when the member enters the drop, and the firefighter still agrees to terminate employment at the end of their maximum drop period. So nothing's changed there. But under the proposed drop program, the firefighter will start contributing 4% of their pay during the time they participate in the drop. And this is a change from the current drop program where, as I said before, the member stops contributing to the pension plan upon drop entry. This will cause a reduction in the required city contribution. Another item that's changing is the cost of living adjustment on benefits earned after October 4th, 2016. Again, generally starts one year after the member exits the drop program. But due to this, there is more of a delay on when that cost of living adjustment will start. Under an eight-year drop program, it'll start later than under a five-year drop program. That, again, causes a reduction in the required city contribution. Two more items. The first one is, there's also a 75% of pay cap and an 87.5% of pay cap that applies to the benefits that the members earn. It depends on which tier they're in. But those would be eliminated under the proposed ordinance. This will have a very small impact on the required city contribution largely because there's another cap. It's $100,000 cap, which is indexed by 2% per year, and that's more likely to apply than that 75 or 87.5% cap. We also modified the retirement rates due to the eight-year drop program, but that has a very small, rather insignificant, impact on the cost. Ultimately, the impact to adopt the proposed eight-year drop program is summarized on page two of our study. If you have that handy, it's the October 14th, 2020 study. And I'll just recap the highlights and then turn it over for questions. But the required contribution in the first year, if the eight-year drop program is adopted, would decrease by $281,000 or 2.15% of covered payroll. The total change in the required city contribution over a 30-year pay period is $11.3 million. And if we present value that stream of savings in today's dollars, that $11.3 million is $4.7 million over the 30-year period. So the obvious question is, why is the required city contribution decreasing under the eight-year drop? And it's really two things. It's members are contributing 4% of their pay while in the drop, which is not what they're doing now. They're not contributing at all when they are members of the drop. And then the extra delay in the COLA associated with an eight-year drop program since members do not receive a COLA on the post-2016 accruals until after they exit the drop. So those are the two items that are really contributing to that $281,000 of savings in the first year. But I'll turn it over and see if there are any questions or anything that I could be helpful with.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions? Yes, Ms. Julie Cassell, Commissioner Cassell?
Sure. Does anybody else have questions they'd like to ask before me?
Well, I have one question just very quickly. Did we consider the cost of the continued highest level of salaries throughout those years? How does that affect the program itself? Did you consider that as a additional cost that would normally be at a lower salary because as you're exiting, you're usually making some of the highest salaries?
Yeah, so it's a very good question. So our study only measures the change on the pension plan. In terms of the pension plan costs, it doesn't matter if people's pay increases while in the drop because their benefit is calculated upon drop entry. In other words, if their benefit is, you know, $2,000 a month, we calculate that at drop entry. They enter the drop, and that's the benefit that, you know, essentially going into a separate account for them to earn. So pay increases while participating in the drop do not affect the pension plan cost. So it was reflected, but there really is no impact on the retirement plan. Although in this plan, I should say, if they get higher pay increases while in the drop and their pay escalates during that period of time, it's going to be more of a savings to the city because they're still contributing 4% of that pay while in the drop. But it's important to note that they're not earning extra benefits. Their pay could go up 50% when they're in the drop, but the benefit's not going to change. It's already calculated at drop entry.
Right. I guess the question that I had, and I guess it's not something that you were, I guess, asked to answer, is if this is so great, why wouldn't we have a 20-year drop? I mean, we could be saving $100 million if this, you know what I'm saying? If this works out. So I guess, and I'm not trying to be facetious. I'm just trying to say there is a reason. And, you know, I think that, I don't know what that is, and I don't understand why this is so important, but I'm trying to understand and put my head around, what is the cost to the taxpayers? And I know that you're just looking at pensions, but there is a cost by carrying higher salaried individuals longer term into the future. You know, the whole idea of retirement is to allow for lower salaried individuals to kind of work up and getting the top tier out the door, so to speak. Not, you know, we lose good things with that, too. Don't get me wrong, but there's a balance, you know? Because if everybody just keeps rising up and nobody is really coming in at the bottom, it becomes a very top-heavy and a very expensive department. So that's probably the reason why you have that shift, that, you know, kind of moving out. So I don't know what that cost factor is. Do you see what I'm saying?
Oh, I perfectly understand what you're saying. It's a good point. But as you said, and as I said before, this study is on the pension plan alone. So it doesn't reflect that, you know, there are other, there are other things to consider, and that's a separate study. It's really not involving us. So I apologize that I can't answer those questions.
Exactly. Well, I appreciate that. So, yeah, go ahead.
I would say, you know, the point about why don't we just have a 20-year drop and it'll save more inside the pension plan? If you have a 20-year drop, no one's going to enter the drop for 20 years because they're going to have no benefit accrued at that point. So just to answer your question specific to the pension plan, that's why, you know, the typical maximum period for drops are five to eight years. You know, that's what I've seen at least. Anything above that, it's such a small benefit, members won't enter the drop because they don't have much of a benefit that they've accrued at that point, if that makes sense.
Gotcha. I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Cassell if there's nobody else. Yes, no? It looks like not. I don't see any hands up. Am I missing hands? Hold on just a minute. Let me make sure I've got everybody on here. Because, yeah, okay. I think it's you, Commissioner Cassell.
Right. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know that you're short on time. I believe it's Mr. Ambrose. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes, it is. Thank you.
So thank you for providing your time today, and I'll just jump into the questions that I have specifically for you. And yes, thank you for clarifying that was one of my questions, that in these calculations, all you considered was the effect on the pension fund, but not the cost that the city incurs in the process, probably known as corresponding costs for this over the course of these three years. So thank you for that answer. And so I looked at this study from GRS Consulting, and it was done on October 14th, 2020 for Mr. Craig Mahoney, and that is our union rep, correct? Or I guess the fire department?
That's correct.
Okay, great. And so you prepared this document for the union reps, and you indicated that it is based on assumption. And I think you said that it is a 6.75% return on market value of assets, correct?
That's the expected investment return assumption. Yes, it is. Yep.
And wouldn't you generally say that 6.75% is a little high? I mean, granted, returns have been good lately. This is a projection out, I think, 30 years. So that is a high return. That's not a conservative number, 6.75%.
Very good question. So we've made a lot of progress with that investment return assumption. And, you know, I am the board actuary. I work, you know, for the retirement board, and we were requested to do this study for the union, yes. But in working with the retirement board, we talk about all the assumptions every year. One of those, and the most important assumption, is the investment return assumption. We have lowered that significantly over the last three or four years. It was 8%, and I apologize, I don't have the report in front of me, but it was probably 8% three or four years ago, now down to 6.75%. Your question is that, you know, aggressive, conservative? I will tell you this. The pension plans are invested in general, 70% equity, sometimes even more, sometimes a little bit less. But I feel very comfortable with the 6.75% long-term assumption. I don't think it's unreasonable. There's a range of reasonableness. I think that's inside of it. When we were at 8%, when we were at 7.5%, I didn't feel as comfortable. Now at 6.34%, I feel much, much better about that assumption.
Do you know how this fund is rated? Because I think at one point in time, and I'm not sure if it was recently or long ago, this fund was remarkably poorly rated. Do we know how this fund is doing right now?
Yeah, well, I could tell you, as of October 1, 2019, the funded ratio, meaning how much of the liability is covered by the plan assets, was 63.5%. And again, it's a little bit dated because it's as of October 1, 19. I would expect some upward movement. We've had great investment returns over the last year. So, you know, I'd expect some upward movement in that, but it is at 63.5%. That being said, you know...
63.5? Wait, I'm sorry. Could I clarify? 63.5% of the liability is covered currently?
As of October 1, 19. It would be higher currently, a little bit, maybe, I'm just throwing out a guess, 66%, 67%. But 63.5% was as of October 1, 19.
Okay.
And, you know, keep them on... I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. No, no, please, go ahead.
No, you can go on. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. My bad.
No, no, it's fine. So I was looking at your summary findings, and again, those are based on, you indicate assumptions, and you indicated the savings, present value of savings. But again, you didn't, you did not compare the cost. So these assumptions stand on their own with respect to the pension fund, but not in connection to the cost outlay from the city. So thank you for that. And so this is a general question for the residents, I know the answer, but in looking at the funds, and you're taking money out, because the drop plan allows for the individual to take their pension out of the larger fund and put it into their, to another account, a separate account for themselves, where they are accruing the interest in the dividend reinvestment benefits, right? So obviously, then, in doing this, adding these three years, we're taking a greater amount of money out of our fund, and therefore ultimately will be accruing less dividend reinvestment and interest, correct?
Well, not really, because, let's just use an example. Someone age 50, let's say, let's say someone age 53 goes into a five-year drop program. They're going to accrue, or they'll have their benefit calculated at age 50, and let's just say it's $2,000 a month, and they'll go into a five-year drop and they accumulate a balance. But that balance, that whole drop account during the time it's accrued, is always netted out of the plan assets. We never include it in plan assets because it's not the pension plan's money. It's that member's money. So it's never like we're taking it out from the pension plan assets. It's always excluded. Now, when you have an eight-year drop, if the member goes in, let's just say that same member goes in at age 50, well, they're not going to have a $2,000 a month benefit because it's calculated three years early. Let's just say they have a $1,500 a month benefit. Now, they have eight years to accumulate a balance. It may accumulate to more than the five-year drop for that person that entered at age 53 or less. It's hard to say. The decision the members have to make when they're entering a drop is, if they're going to get big pay increases in the future, they probably should not enter the drop because their benefit's going to go up. If they don't think they're going to get big pay increases in the future, then they should enter the drop because their benefit is calculated once they enter. So I don't think it should be viewed as, you know, that they're taking interest away from the fund. That's always, you know, considered separately.
I'm not saying they're taking interest. I'm saying they're taking the principal, which in and of itself would result in the interest and dividend reinvestment. That's what I'm saying. So another thing is, sorry. So I wanted to just say that you note in this that there are risks, you aptly note, involved, specifically, you note risk associated with measuring accrued liability and determining contribution required for assumption rates regarding... Yeah, okay. Well, you could do a risk assessment, but on page four here says, under risk assessment, that you know that the risk assessment was outside of the scope of the report, so thus you didn't do it.
Correct.
Were you asked by the City of Delray Beach to do a risk assessment?
No, we weren't.
Okay. And were you asked by the union to do a risk assessment?
No. Nope.
Okay. And so lastly, I'm sorry, I've taken up quite a bit of your time and it's possibly over.
It's okay.
Your calculations are based on information furnished, too, I believe you said that. And the last thing that you said, I think, is it is not intended to be interpreted as a recommendation in favor of change, just information provided that was asked for, correct?
Yes, we are not recommending to do this, not to do this. It's not our role. It's to measure the impact of the plan design that was proposed.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Ambrose. I appreciate your time today.
Sure, thanks. And I do have to request, unless there's any last questions, if it's okay, if I run to my next meeting, if that's okay.
Yes, no, I think that you're good to go because I don't see any hands up. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, and take care. Yep, bye-bye.
All right, very good. So back to Jennifer. Are we now just, do you want to do any kind of a presentation? Is there anybody that is going to do a presentation, or are we just in discussion and questions?
Well, we're prepared, if you would like, Madam Mayor. We do have Chief Tommy and we have Dwayne DeAndre that can give you a summary of what is before you for consideration. And obviously, as you can probably see on the line, we also have our outside counsel, Jim Lynn and Robert Norton. And I also have somewhere, I don't see participants right now. We may have our, yes, we do have our new finance director who started on Monday, Mr. John Leggy. He's also on the line. So what I could do is have Chief Tommy and Dwayne DeAndre give a very brief overview, if you'd like.
Sure, that would be great. And then we'll go into questions.
Hi, Mayor, it's Dwayne. Can you hear me?
We can.
I just wanted to give a overview of what you have in front of you. The new agreement remains materially unchanged with a few exceptions, and I wanted to go over those. Number one, the first year of this three-year contract is fiscally status quo. Number two, the second year adds lieutenants as supervisors for each rescue unit. No new employees would be taken on to the fire service for that. Promotions would be made within, so the head count would remain the same. Mr. Ambrose just talked to you about the pension reform. The fourth thing would be the step plan would continue in the second and third year, and there would be an increase to leave accruals that would happen in the third year. One of the things that we really fought for in these negotiations and the union agreed was the union agreeing to pay for any future employee and family-dependent health insurance rates in the second, starting in the second year and moving forward. And the union agreed to a more comprehensive drug and alcohol testing, which does include random drug testing, which we currently do not have. The union conceded on several operational enhancements, which will allow for fire administration to better manage the department. And Chief Tommy could probably talk a little bit better about what those operational enhancements are, and I'll turn it over to him right now.
Sure. Some of those operational enhancements were changes in the promotional procedure that benefits the city, changes in the procedures for working out of classification, changes in procedure for vacation, and overtime procedure changes. Those are the four big ones that will help us manage the department better. And we're available, Mayor, if you have, anyone has any questions?
You're muted, Mayor. Excuse me.
Sitting here talking, I apologize. Okay, so is there anybody, you just answered the question that I was talking about, just to make sure that you were finished. I do have some questions about the procedures that we had just talked about, the operational enhancements. So you listed like three of them, and the first one was, I didn't really catch it. If you can list them again so that I can hear them. Chief?
Sure, here it goes, Mayor.
Sure, for the promotional procedure changes to benefit the city.
Okay, what is that? Exactly. Before you can move on, what's the promotional procedures?
So in order to get promoted, you have to have certain qualifications and certain things, certain classes, things like that. Some of those things kind of tied our hands, and what we did, we just kind of untied our hands, and we're able to now, at the chief's discretion, look at those requirements and make decisions based on what they have in order for, you know, can, for the job, if they're qualified for the job.
Okay. And then the next item was?
Next one was working out of classification.
What is that exactly?
That is when, say, a captain or a driver or lieutenant is not there that day, be in vacation or sick or whatever, that we can take somebody that's on a current promotional list and upgrade them into that position. So instead of hiring overtime to captain overtime, we can bring a driver or firefighter up and have them upgrade into that captain's position at a lower rate, at that firefighter or driver engineer rate, plus the 5% for the, for working out of classification. So what we did there was, we, so if we don't have a promotional list, we have nobody to move it up. But if we have guys that have taken a task book and have gotten cleared to upgrade, to fit in that position, then that allows us to still use those people that pass that task book to fill those positions without having to hire overtime for those positions.
Okay. And then the third thing was?
There was vacation and, I'm trying to find a vacation order real quick here. Sorry, Mayor, I'm just trying to find the, that article. I needed to know. So the changes that we made there was basically how many people can be off? So basically, the number of people stayed the same, but we had to add in the lieutenant. So we went down from having two firefighters off to one firefighter. So it'll be one captain, one lieutenant, one driver, and one firefighter would be off on vacation. We also added that a second firefighter may replace one of the promoted positions on a vacation or comp time, may be replaced to promote it if the second firefighter selection is made prior to the promotional rank.
How does that benefit the people, the city, the taxpayers? Just curious.
Well, we're still allowing the city, it's not really benefiting the people. It's a benefit for the administrator, fire administration, allows us to manage the department better. So by doing that, I think it benefits the city.
Okay. Very good. Ms. Cassell, did you want to pipe in? You had your hand up. So those are the questions that I had just right off the bat. I'll probably have more, but I'll reserve time.
Does anybody else have questions? I have quite a few. Does anybody else?
I don't see any hands. I think you're good to go.
Okay. So I'm going to start. I know everybody's going to sigh, but I just wanted to be known again that I've stated repeatedly that, you know, I'm concerned about this process with respect to everybody in the city and my colleagues. I really think that legal representation is something that the residents should have had by an outside consultant during these negotiations. Again, I've said it before, this is by far the most significant item on our budget. It is not a one-time expenditure, and it establishes a framework that binds the city well into the future. And I think we do a disservice to our residents when they are not represented by our consultant attorney who specializes in this area. I just wanted to say that. So I was hoping, because I do guess that some people listening do not really understand how this retirement plan works. I could try and explain it, or maybe Attorney Jellen, if you would like to explain it to the residents, so they understand what's really at consideration here today with respect to not only the drop program, but just retirement as a whole. Would you mind taking a moment? Or if you'd like, I may, if I may take a shot at it, if you like.
I guess maybe you should take a shot, and I can always clarify if there's something else.
Okay, I'll try and take a shot at it. So basically, our retirement program works, I'm going to say, I hope I'm correct. And I believe if someone contributes 20 years, is that correct? They retire with their full benefits for life, correct? Their pension for life?
I believe that's correct. Mr. Lynn is on the line if he wants to unmute.
Okay. And unlike what typically happens in the workforce where you wait till 65 to collect your benefits, you collect them immediately upon retiring from the city, correct?
Mr. Lynn, do you want, can some...
Mr. Lynn, do you want, can somebody unmute Mr. Lynn?
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. I'm sorry.
Normally, when somebody retires, they work until they reach the retirement age, which is either 20 or 25 years of service with certain age requirements. And then, then they can retire and begin drawing benefits. But this plan does allow what's called vested terminated, which means a firefighter could leave the city after vesting, after 10 years of service, but before the retirement age, and they would be able to draw that retirement benefit a few years later when they reach the retirement age.
Right. And so when someone retires, is it correct to say that they're getting these benefits for life?
Yes.
Correct. So our firefighters, from the day they leave the building and retire, if they are fully vested, get their benefits for the rest of their life. And I was looking up today, the average lifespan is about 80. So if you, a firefighter comes into the city at 25, and he works to 45 or 50, then he's getting pension benefits for the rest of his life. And if in an unfortunate case where he passes, then his spouse would get 65% benefits, and is that for her life?
Yes.
Right. So in, for the residents, if the gentleman or lady enters the drop program, right now, the way the program says, they opt to enter in five years before they intend to retire. And during the course of that five years, they collect their pay and they collect their pension. Correct?
They, well, the pension.
Collected to themselves, I'm sorry. Correct.
Yeah, the pension gets paid into an account in the pension plan. The member doesn't receive it directly, but then when they retire, they get all the accumulated pension benefits plus their monthly pension benefit.
Right. So they leave receiving the lump sum of the pension and then getting a pension payment every year for life. And what's under consideration today is to allow them to collect their pension while working and collecting their pay, not for five years, but for eight years.
That's right.
Thank you. And so, may I ask you something? What is the average pension payout to an employee? Is there a number when someone retires after serving their full length of service, the 20 or 25 years?
There is a number. I can give you the average payout. I need to go get a file, just a second.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Lynn.
You're muted. I think I can't hear you, Mr. Lynn, if you're talking. Mr. Lynn, can you hear us?
He can't hear us.
Hello? No. Somebody needs to help us.
I think he put his earphones in and they're not working.
Yeah. He's talking and talking, he's not listening. Can't hear you.
I don't know if he recognizes, oh, I think he's trying to, there he is. I think he's trying to find the issue. Hello?
Jim, can you hear us? I'm going to see if I can email Mr. Lynn the call-in number.
Okay. I just.
You did it. You did it.
Hello?
Yes, you did it.
All right. Well, so now all I had to do was find the information.
I'm not hearing him.
Oh, I can hear him.
Okay. So the, the average benefits being paid out for somebody between 60 and 64 years, look about, 70, in the neighborhood of $70,000 right now.
Thank you. So in the drop program, is that the same amount?
That's the same amount that would be paid into the drop during the drop participation.
So right now, one.
Oh, boy. We need to fix that, guys. Hold up just a second, Julie. IT, we need to fix this.
I think it's because he needed to mute, and he just did. Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
Okay. All right, you can.
Right now, with that $70,000 consideration, it's as if the gentleman in the drop program gets approximately a $350,000 bonus, right? I mean, I don't know how else to call it, what else to call it, for five years. And if they go for eight years, it becomes a $560,000. When they leave the city. Is that fair to say?
Mr. Lynn, can you hear us? Are we having trouble? We just can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So it's not exactly a bonus because they're receiving the accumulated pension benefits that they would have received anyway if they retired. But they get a lump sum equal to the amount of the pension benefits they would have received but were paid into the drop account during the drop. Right?
But they're getting it for five additional years more than they were, were other, if they leave the job, they would get it. They stay in the job, they're accumulating their salary, their benefits, all the other things you get from employment from the city, and they're also getting this pension amount put into an account. And for five years, it's, it's, what did I say it was? 70,000? Sorry, I'm so, it's $350,000. And if you make it eight years, it goes up to 560, is that correct? Did you have anything to say about that, Mr. Lynn? Or no? That's just that?
Muted. Oh, yes, correct.
That's correct. So we're looking at going from giving them $350,000 if they're in the drop program at the end of five years, going to 560,000 at the end of eight years. And the city continues to pay at the highest salary. Now, how much, what's the percentage that the city contributes to the pension fund?
City currently contributes about 63% of payroll.
Thank you. So the city contributes 63%. Thank you so much for your time and answering my question.
Can I add another question here as we are talking about this? Because one of the things that I also noticed is an increase in the, significant increase in the amount of accrued sick and vacation allotments. So.
I'm sorry.
When we are looking at the, when does, when does that receive? Is that received at the point of the drop, or is that at the end as well? Mr. Lynn?
I, under this plan, I don't believe the accrued leave payouts go into the pension benefit at all. And I'm, but I'm not sure when they are paid out. The chief probably knows the answer to that.
Chief, can you answer that briefly, just when it's paid out?
Yes, ma'am. They do it in thirds of the last three years that they're in the drop.
Right. Okay. So, so we are increasing that number of hours, is that correct, by about 25%? If I read it correctly, in this, in this contract?
Yes.
Not 25, but 20%. And what that does is that, see, there's a disparity between when firefighters go from shift to days and then from days to shift, they lose about 20% of their accruals. So what this does by changing this, this helps with that, that's keeping it the same. So no matter if I use a person on shift or I use them on days or from days to shift, they shouldn't lose any of their accrual. And right now, they're currently doing that. They're losing 20% of their accrual when they go back to shift. So to make it fair and equitable across the board, whenever I need somebody to go to shift or I need somebody to go from shift to days, it's equal. It's the same. It's not going to be this disparity of 20% any longer.
You're muted, Mayor.
At the end of the period in which somebody is employed with the city, or they're moving into the drop program, if they have accumulated a certain number of vacation or sick pay that they have not used, unused, there is an increase in what our payout will allow. Is that not correct? Did I read that wrong?
For, for sick time accrual, there's no change. For vacation accrual, there is a change. It went up by 72 hours. That's also attached to, everything's a percentage, correct? So they may not have that full 1480, it may be less than that.
No, I understand. I mean, so what they're basically saying is the max that you can actually accrue is 1480?
Correct.
Okay. And, and that is actually being increased from what number? How many hours?
From 1408 to 1480, it's an increase of 72 hours.
Okay. And those, those, just, just so I understand, those, those checks that are given to pay off the unused vacation and the unused sick leave, will you do them in a third, a third, a third during their drop period? Is that what you were basically saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And, and they can be sizable, yeah?
I'm sorry, say that again?
They can be sizable checks. I mean, there are some that are approaching $100,000.
I don't think there's any approaching that amount. No, I don't think there's that much. I don't know, I haven't seen any of them.
Mayor, you're muted again.
It's muted. It's muting, not, not with my, I'm not muting it. I'm looking at a sheet, and I'm just looking at one, one line, and it, and it looks like it's an $83,000, a vacation liability and a sick leave liability. Is that the lines that I should be looking at on a per-person basis? That's what our city owes them?
That, I don't know. That would be more of a finance question.
Okay. Well, anyway, I'm just looking at one line of somebody that works in the fire department, and I, I can see that there is $83,000 of sick leave and vacation leave. So that actually is a sizable amount of money that's going out, too, in addition to what we're talking about. And I understand, these are accrued, these are, these are amounts of money that basically we have promised, and there's no question about that. There's nothing to be, there's nothing wrong with that. Let's just put it that way. I just want to understand it. That's what I'm trying to do here. So I'm, I'm good with that. I just, I just wanted to understand what that was about. So I don't know, I saw.
I have more questions. That was just the beginning for me. If I can, may I continue or?
You may. I'm sorry for interrupting you. You go right ahead.
No, no, you can interrupt me as much as you like. So just really quickly, and this is just probably not an important question, but the agenda cover report reflects the pension reform saving the city a lot of money. And I'm wondering if, I know that Mr. Ambrose did not do any calculations, but did the city do any calculations with respect to retaining employees on, at the higher level for an additional three years? If not, it's fine, I'm just curious if anyone did.
No, I don't believe they did, but I'm not necessarily buying into your theory with that, and I'll tell you why. Because I have a very senior that is going to retire, but then we extended another three years. Let's say he did retire at the five-year mark. There's somebody that's just a senior or maybe a couple of years off from him that's going to move into that rank and get that higher percentage of a rank. So the high salary is still going to be there, that's not going to change. They may be off by $4,000, $5,000, but for the most part, they're the same.
Right. But I mean, you have to agree, what did you, Chief, that this is kind of stifling the upward mobility for the younger guys? If, in, in one, in this instance, they have to wait five years before there's an ability to move up, and now you're looking at eight years. And respectfully, I say this, and I do say this with all due respect, when, when you're allowed to get your pension, right, when you go out the door, it just seems a little bit indifferent to the younger gentlemen to not just go out the door and let them take their seat at the table. I mean, five years of collecting your pension while you're actually working is pretty substantial. You don't see that in any industries. So step out and let the young gentlemen come up and have their seat at the table. But now you're looking to stay on another three years. And I feel like, I wonder how that'll affect the morale of the gentlemen below who are eager to move up. And that's speculative, because no one can answer that question, but that's just my opinion, honestly. And, and another thing about those calculations is, I'm concerned that no one asked for a risk management assessment on this. I mean, you're talking about a substantial amount of money over the course of years. And, and the gentleman notes that there's factors that, actuarial measurements that could differ significantly based on anything. COVID is going on right now, we don't know how the econo, how, how we're going to bounce back economically, we have a new president, there could be new legislation. There's a lot of things that factor into this. So when the cover sheet. So when the cover sheet on this agenda says that the pension reform is providing a savings, that's not accurate. And I, I don't, I think that misrepresents facts and it concerns me a little bit um because nobody is giving us the um corresponding costs. And we all agree there are corresponding costs. So um, I'll move on. One of the things that I would like to ask you about, um, Chief, is the um Excel document that you provided, which was the I A F F cost out document. It was the one where you did the, you know, the first um negotiations, the second, the third, the fourth. And ultimately, we got to the green column at the end, which is number six. And it says cost. Do you have that in front of you by chance?
I do.
Okay, thanks. So you're saying that the cost of the salary increase in the first year is status quo? And just as an example, the fire salary alone goes up one hundred and seventy-eight thousand fifty-seven dollars. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. But then if you go down to year two, it's one million three hundred fifty-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollar increase in salary. So that's, year one is one seventy-eight and year two is one million three hundred fifty-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-five.
Correct.
Correct? Okay. And that, we, we're not hiring any new employees you indicated in this. But in, in all probability, your move to create this um in, you know, this level of lieutenant, I believe, is that it?
That's correct.
So, but the, but this is a six hundred and sixty percent increase in salary from one year to another. Six hundred and sixty-one percent increase in salary from one year to the other. And then in the following year, from the second year, the first year, your status quo. The second year, you increase by six hundred and sixty-one percent, your fire salary. And then going from the second year to the third year, there's a fifty-two point nine percent, a fifty-three percent increase in salary. That's pretty substantial.
So since you're looking at the sheet, if you go to proposal number one, we started off with almost an eight million dollar proposal from the, from the union. And we negotiated over several months to get it down to the four point one that you see before you. And the fact that it's going up in the second year, the first year is nothing but just steps. So they get their steps in that first year. In the second year, they're getting their steps, getting all the other benefits that are associated with that, which are increased percentages in the steps and also the, the five percent for the lieutenants who are going to get promoted from firefighter or driver up. So that's why that's a big increase. But if you notice, once that happens, it stabilizes and stays at the eight fifty-seven, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand for the third year.
Well, it doesn't stabilize because, because it goes up fifty-three percent. Um, it goes from.
Yes, ma'am.
Right. But I mean, the idea that, well, they wanted seven million, so they, you know, and now we're down to four million, it doesn't really, it's not a great representation. Because what I'm saying to you is, we're talking about a one-year increase in salary of six hundred and sixty-one percent. It's remarkably substantial. And then after that, fifty-three percent, which is also rather substantial for the taxpayers. Um, so, and it's no new hires. That's. Um, so um, I did say that I believe the drop program is not going to be great for morale for the younger gentlemen and it will stifle upward mobility. Um, so can I get into like some specifics of the contract, if you don't mind? Um, I think the mayor touched on this, but I'm just going through my list. Article forty-seven A, you added seventy-two hours of vacation for non-shift people to walk, to take away. So that's a twenty-five percent increase from what was there. And I think you already said that. Article thirteen, um, which is salary section five, you had the forty-hour incentives, um, and it went from one dollar to two dollars. So that's a hundred percent increase. Both in article five, uh, sec, in article, I'm sorry, excuse me, thirteen, section five. And then also in section four, that's a one hundred percent increase in both of them. Um, so, and then when I, this question, I'm not really sure about this one. Um, ocean rescue, if you look at the last contract steps on the website that shows the categories, um, in, in the contract currently that is looking to be replaced, you had ocean rescue trainee, ocean rescue two, which is a lifeguard. And then you had ocean rescue three, which is a lieutenant. But then in the new step plan, there's ocean rescue captain. Um, and that's at a substantially higher salary. Is that another, did that occur before I became a commissioner? Or did you, was there another, um, another level added to the ocean rescue as well?
That was a result of the supervisory unit. So the captain and the chief felt they were not in the bargaining unit. So once they became, once Perk ruled that they became in the bargaining unit and then we negotiated that, the captain wasn't a chief, so he had to fit into the rank and file. And then the chief, he was now in the supervisory unit.
Okay. I don't, thank you for that. Um, so, um, okay, overtime. So just, and then this is retroactive. And I presumably that is because um, if you want the, presumably that's for the sake of the drop program. And I, I mean, I know that um, I atta, I asked attorney Jelen and she indicated that the overtime has already been paid out. So that's not necessarily affected. What other things um would be affected besides the drop program from um the, the aspect of this contract that is retroactive?
Can you clarify what you're asking? Because I don't believe there's nothing in the contract that's retroactive. So I don't know what you're actually asking me.
Well, it says the contract is retroactive. And it's, the, the, the date coincides with the date that this document was provided about the um drop program. So what I'm asking you is, it says it's retroactive. And so what is affected? What would be affected retroactive in the contract? I don't know that. I'm not sure about.
Once the, once the contract expired last year, September thirtieth, twenty twenty, we froze their steps. So nobody was getting a raise. So during negotiations, there's a lot of things that happen during negotiations. There's a back and forth, right? So one of the things that we did uh to show good faith, we told them that if they would drop the impasse, that we would reinstitute the step plan to try to get bargaining moving forward again. Okay? So they agreed to that reluctantly, but they did agree to it, right? So they pulled the impasse and we, we restarted the um step plans immediately, go retro back going to October one, okay? Which they should have been receiving those, those, those steps the whole time. So now that, that's the only thing that's, that's the only thing that I know of that's uh re, re, retroactive.
Okay. So I'd just like to clarify that that, that doesn't somehow change um anything else. But thank you for that answer. Okay, um, overtime. So many questions about overtime. If you um go to article twelve A F R. So um, hang on one second. I need to look at my notes on this. The old contract that this, or the contract that's currently um looking to be replaced, on page eighteen, and it's page twenty-three if you're looking at it as a PDF, it says shift employees are required to work up to and including one hundred and forty-four hours in any twenty-one day work cycle, after which time they are paid according with provisions of article twelve for overtime. So what I understand that to mean is, you're not entitled to any overtime until after you've worked your shift of a hundred and forty-four hours in this twenty-one day cycle. Right?
Correct.
Now go fast forward to the current contract under consideration. Article, article uh twelve A F R on page twenty says in section one, all work performed outside of the regularly scheduled work hours as defined in ten A F R. And I go back to ten A F R and forgive me if I'm incorrect, but I don't think I see a designation to define what is the actual work cycle. So if there's not defined it, and maybe you have, forgive me if I'm wrong, does that mean that every minute you work after your eight hours at the end of your shift, because it says shift, entitles you to overtime?
Yes, ma'am. Um, it's, it's not eight-hour shift. It'd be a twenty-four hour shift. Um, and yes, it would be, it would be exactly as you said. And yes, it is budgeted for.
That's substantial though. What, how much did you budget for that? Just curious because it's a lot.
I, I don't know how much you budgeted for. It's our, it's our current practice. We've been doing this um for the last year and a half, almost two years.
Right. And, and that brings me to my next question. You've been doing that as a real, result of something that I think Mr. DeJesus implemented, but he referred to it as temporary and not to set a precedent. But it appears as though you've put it in this contract and set a precedent. I'm remarkably concerned about the um, how much overtime will be acquired by individuals. And now especially, which is concerning to me, in light of the fact that, and I have notes on this, you have reduced down your coverage. So you're saying prior contract, you had three spots available for vacation leave. Now you have four spots available for vacation leave. And so, I mean, forgive me, and this is absolutely not meant to be disparaging in any way to you, but we've all seen the conversations on social media that refer to another individual in the fire department abusing the vacation and overtime pay. And I do not want to put our city in a situation where we have an internal auditor in your department looking for things because we are opening the door. This seems like we are creating a problem. I absolutely suggest to um my fellow commissioners to consider what was just said. Overtime is after a twenty-four hour shift instead of what used to be a twenty-one day work cycle that consists of a hundred and forty-four hours. The city will be, the taxpayers will be paying a great deal of overtime in light of this change. And again, that was not meant to be a precedent. So I'm not sure how it got to be in this contract this way, but I don't believe it should be. Um, okay. Thank you for allowing me the time. I'm going to keep going. Um.
Can I ask, can I butt in just real quick to ask about this overtime? I, I'm, I, I think I, I think I'm understanding what your concerns are and I think they're legitimate. If there is a, let's say firefighter that works, um, what, what is your week? Uh, your, your, uh, is it a forty-hour work week normally? Is that what it is at twenty-four hour shift?
Forty-eight, a forty-eight hour work week.
Okay. So if, let's say, a firefighter works twenty-six hours but doesn't work the rest of the week, or the rest of the shift, is, is that person now able to get a two-hour overtime allotment? Even though they haven't worked a four, their forty, forty-eight hour shift? Is that what this is saying?
Yes, that's what they're saying. But it's really, it's the two-week pay period, right? It's ninety-six hours. So just because they worked a twenty-four hour shift and they didn't work the next twenty-four hour shift, they still got three more shifts they're going to work in that ninety-six hour period.
Right. But if they, if they shorted themselves the, the, the time on a different shift but overworked one shift, we're going to be now having the taxpayers pay overtime even though they haven't fulfilled the entire work shift? That's what it sounds like we're doing here. And that's concerning. Am I missing something?
It's concerning. And that's exactly what we're.
I, I'll let you continue, um, Ms. Cassell. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Um, okay. So I did talk about that the prior contract on page forty-three says that there are three spots, uh, article fifteen, uh, available for vacation leave. And now you've um made that four spots, which again, will just encourage greater overtime. Um, and that concerns me. Uh. There was something about the holiday pay that we had discussed in the meeting. And you know what? I, forgive me because I did not note in my notes what um page it's on. But you indicated that so someone can work an eight-hour shift and someone can work a ten, but they're working the same amount of hours ultimately at the end of the week, correct? But then the eight-hour individual will get eight hours of vacation and the ten-hour individual will get ten hours of vacation. Is that my, is my understanding correct, Chief?
That's, that's correct. But all of our day people that's in the union are working ten-hour shifts, four tens.
Okay. I just, um, I would be concerned that if someone wants a ten-hour shift and then he gets ten, or she, excuse me, ladies, vacation hours versus a person who's on the eight-hour shift, but they're ultimately wa, working the same amount, amount of hours, I question how fair that really is to the employees again. But that's, that's so small in the scheme of things for me. So I mean, I think I've covered all of my questions. Again, I would say to you that the representation of the savings is not close to even accurate because it doesn't uh include the corresponding cost to the residents. I, I think, you know, I'm just going to say this, where this is the beginning of us imposing consequences on our residents to pay for our actions. You know, and, and, and this is no disrespect. Um, but during the last budget meeting, there was talk of potentially needing a fire tax. I'm not amenable to doing that to the residents, but we keep on increasing the cost. And now, you know, we have this um, uh, business review of the alarm systems or whatever it is that was on the agenda the other night to try and figure out how we're going to enforce this and collect funds. Now, granted, this was on the books before, but now we're going to our businesses during Covid and asking them to pay us money for these inspections because we need the money. And we need the money because we're not being fiscally responsible. And respectfully, you know, I, I just think we have to think about the residents and the ramifications of what we're doing. You know, we are digging a hole that we are going to bury our residents in for the, a long time. And I say to you, and gentlemen, fellow colleagues, please, right now, the drop program provides the uh individual employee three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And this change will provide them five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And of that, sixty-three percent is contributed by the taxpayers. I, I just think this is remarkably unfair to even be considering at this time. Um, and I thank you. Thank you for answering all my questions, gentlemen. Thank you for your time, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Frankel, you're recognized.
Thank you. Dwayne, Chief, the legal department, thank you so much for a well, uh, great job, well done. Uh, it's amazing that we were able to successfully do this, albeit a little bit late. Uh, you guys did a great job. I'm very, very happy for the men and women in our, our fire department. I think you did a great, great job and I look forward to approving this contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, uh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Boilston.
Thank you. Um, I, I would like to say the same. Thank you to, to staff, to legal um for spending the time with me over these last six months and um letting, giving me updates on every single aspect of this contract. I appreciate you spending the time with me to make sure I understand every element. Um, from the way I, I see it, we didn't meet halfway. Um, the, the fire actually had to come a lot farther across the table than, than our city staff had to. They gave up a lot of things that at the beginning I thought was um, was honestly the fire would, would never let in on a few of those elements. And they did. And um, so not only did we compromise, I think, I think the fire, knowing the situation that we're in, um, compromised even more than they usually would. Um, we're, we're coming out of a time where, you know, my colleagues voted to ensure that their salaries were in the top three um in comparison to Boynton and Boca. And now we're looking at our fire and uh, we're not going to get them there. They're, they're going to be, you know, top, top three, top five um in some of those different areas. But I think it's reasonable considering the situation we're, we're in with the pandemic and the, and the uncertainty here in the future. I appreciate Ms., all Ms. Cassell's questions. I had many of the same questions, but they were, they were answered over the last few months as we went through the negotiations. Um, I think at no point is it fair to say that this contract's unfair or that we're digging a hole for our residents or it's irresponsible. All those are extreme exaggerations. Um, and then to even question the idea of a pension altogether, I can't even tell you the feeling that they gave me. My great-grandfather living on a pension because he served our country. My grandfather was a firefighter. My father is a police officer and my wife is a teacher. The pension is part of why and how you're able to make that sacrifice across all those different positions. And I, the fact that you would even question that concept, um, I'm, I'm really without words. The fact that we would, we would literally quote Facebook posts or concerns of, we've all seen the questions on. we've all seen the questions on Facebook that I trust our staff. I trust Ms. Alvarez, uh, and, and, uh, opinion that she's given me on this. I, I trust our, our fire, and I'm so glad that we are going to continue to be one of the best fire departments in our county, be able to recruit and retain some of the best firefighters and first responders that, uh, I, I, I believe the state or country has to offer, and, and our record shows it. And it's one last concern for the residents. And I think Ms. Casal has to understand this is that we have a lot of concerns and a lot of issues that we have to deal with as, as a city, and we're all very aware of them. But luckily, we have a really good fire department, and luckily, we have a really good police department. And that isn't one of our concerns because I, I, I would hate to be a commissioner in a city that does have concerns there. Um, so I cannot wait to approve this contract. And, um, and I'll, I'll give the floor to, uh, back to the mayor.
Mayor, if I may.
Well, can I, can I?
No, I, I, I think I, I deserve a response. I did not question the pension in general. My brother was a firefighter. My uncle was involved with the firefighters on a volunteer basis. I would never question someone getting a pension. But I don't believe the residents have any understanding of how it actually works. And I do believe they should know how it works. Do I think they should get a pension? 100%. I'm not arguing to remove the five-year drop. I think it's great, but I don't think we should add to it. And when I referenced Facebook, it was the comments about abusing overtime. And they're out there, and we've all, it's been discussed on the dais. And lastly, if I may, you talked about how our gentlemen are underpaid. Mr. Uh, Chief gave us this chart, and our gentlemen are not underpaid. Um, in the starting salary, they are fourth by $300. And in the base salary at top out, they are number one, number one. So that's not accurate, and, and I, I don't honestly appreciate you saying that I'm opposed to the pension. I'm not at all opposed to the pension. I think they're very lucky to have that pension. I hope our, uh, police department have the same exact pension, and I wish our city, city staff had that pension. Uh, but I'm being realistic. There's a cost to these things that we need to factor into the decision-making, and there is a cost to this. And the cost is the responsibility of the residents that we represent. Thank you.
Deputy Vice Mayor, you've got the floor.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate everyone who was involved in this process. I thank you, Commissioner Casal, for educating us on some things. Hopefully, the residents, uh, whatever they, the experience they bring to the table will understand a little bit better what you're, uh, trying to say. However, I believe that this is a special type of situation. Everyone cannot be a firefighter, paramedic. And I, for one, don't understand everything that they're up against and what they have to go through. But this is, um, making a contract with years in the making. And I believe that everyone was, came to the table with an open mind. That's what contract, uh, negotiating and bargaining is all about. I believe that as usual, Delray probably came out on the better end of this because that's the way we are in Delray. And I, for one, cannot wait to vote for this contract. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Um, I wanted to ask a couple of questions. Number one, um, well, first of all, you know, when we were first talking about this, everybody was under, we had the consensus that we were not going to negotiate, um, that we were going with the one-year status quo. And we found ourselves here now at the, um, eve of an election, uh, of, of passing something that I think is, is going to be affecting our taxpayers from, from the point at which this goes into effect until. And, um, it is extremely important, uh, to be able to make sure that our taxpayers, um, and, and ourselves are fully aware of what it is that we are actually passing. And I appreciate, uh, very much, um, uh, Ms. Casal, you being so thoughtful and, um, and also, um, very, um, deliberate in, in, in going through the, the contract and, and having the questions that you do. Um, my question is, um, to Ms. Alvarez, do you agree with this contract? You supporting it?
Madam Mayor, this is the, the output of our entire staff team and legal team recommendation for consideration. Yes.
So yes, okay. And, um, I want to ask, uh, Mr. Lynn, were you involved in the negotiations of this contract, sir? As our, as our representative?
Not, not directly at the bargaining table, no.
Okay. So basically, you got the contract, basically you had to go through it, and it was at the point at which it was kind of negotiated, and then looking through and trying to make sure that there wasn't anything more or less? Is that what your, your role was here?
Yes, and I drafted the final pension article.
Okay, great. Yes, Ms. Alvarez?
I, I'd like to clarify something, if I may. When it comes to how these negotiations work, um, city staff sits at the table with the fire union. And when the proposals are coming back and forth and being discussed and considered, what occurs is that city staff knows that we cannot, what we call TA an article. We can't agree to an article if we know that that's going to need some legal review and inputs. So that's what we're referring to when we talk about our legal team. So we don't agree to anything at the table without knowing and going back to legal first, getting their opinion, getting their input into the matter and some, you know, finalizing some language. And then we go back to the table, knowing that we have the legal information to be able to TA it or not. Um, a lot of the things that the union proposed, of course, we came back and said, sorry, we can't do this. Um, so I just want to make that very clear, that Mr. Lynn and Mr. Norton, and of course Lynn Jellin, were always, um, available. Sometimes we would, um, step out of the room, call them, talk about what's, what's being discussed and whatnot, and then they'd tell us what their thoughts are with the matter. So they always had their input. I want, I really feel it's important that we make that clear. Um, and that Legal obviously gave us the language when we were trying to finalize all of this, these different changes.
Okay. Well, it brings me to the concern that I have, which is basically, who was representing the taxpayers at the table? I know I wasn't in there, and I know that basically, I don't know who was in there to truly represent the, the, the outcome of this attack. And, and I get that we now have that responsibility, but it's after the fact. It's after the fact. We are actually being given this at a, uh, an 11th hour on a couple of days before an election. And it is unbelievable to me that we are doing this at this time. This is a huge budgetary issue that we are talking about just before an election. So it makes you kind of wonder, and I hope that the taxpayers are paying attention because there are three members on this commission that have expressed how excited they are to push this forward. And trust me, I don't want to do anything that injures or doesn't benefit those that are serving in our town. I think that's very, very important. But I don't like the process, and I think the process was absolutely flawed because the people never had the opportunity of looking at anything that was going on until 5:00 PM on Monday of this week. That's the first time that we put anything out about this, and this is a multimillion-dollar contract. This is not the way that we are supposed to deal, represent the people. And so from my perspective, I feel that this is absolutely one of the worst things that we can do. And if I'm still here come next week and the next meeting that we have, I'm going to make the suggestion that we add to our charter or to our rules that this can never happen again like this, that there is a 60-day period before any election that no major changes with respect to, um, big, uh, ticket items can be changed on the budget by an elected, uh, crew. And the reason for that is because we can be influenced. We can be influenced. And there are other towns that actually have that for this very reason. We don't. And that's unfortunate because we are making a very expensive decision on the eve of an election. And I think that that in and of itself should be very, very concerning to the population of voters out there, and I truly believe that. So I also don't understand that even in the, um, the memorandum that was put out, that we don't have a number eight. There's a 25% increase in the amount of accrued benefit for the, for the, uh, you know, the, the, um, vacation. That should be on there. That's not on there. So I already know what the answer is going to be here as far as where we're going with this, and I have no problem. I have, everybody's got their hands up again. But I don't even know what, in what order. Um, but I just want to make sure that I expressed what I'm feeling and what this process, how this process took place from my perspective as a citizen who might have wanted to know what their, their representatives were doing and why we are being pushed to have to do this at this late hour. I don't think that it's, and I understand that we didn't negotiate at the beginning, but we already talked about that this year was going to be a freeze. We normally do negotiations in April. This is March. We didn't, we don't have to do this. This is not an emergency. It's not an emergency. Ms., uh, Vice Mayor, I'll start with you.
For one, I just want to say that you, you spoke for all of us, saying that we can be swayed. Um, no, I, I'm not going to agree to that. Sorry. Um, this was supposed to be done six months ago, so it's not like we're rushing to get something done. This is actually way overdue. It has gone back and forth many times, and we have been involved the entire time. I'm not really sure in past years how you think the public has been involved more in reviewing the contracts for our fire or our police. It's not like we do public charrettes or anything. The document goes out. We gave them an, you, you, you asked for an extra two days. We did the extra two days. It didn't really seem to make a difference, you know, either you or Ms. Casal, but we gave it to you. Um, and, uh, I would just like to point out that we all said we wanted status quo in the first year of this agreement. We did not say not to negotiate. We have to negotiate as a city. You do understand that, right, Mayor? We have to negotiate. We can't refuse to negotiate. We have to negotiate. And, and we all agreed that in that negotiation, we were expecting status quo for year one. And, and we got it. Our city staff got that. Our fire department came to the table with that. Just want to clear that right up, uh, just to make sure everyone understands that that is not accurate at all.
Okay. So let's clear up, let me just clear up that we have basically had this thing shoved, ramrodded down the throats of the, of, of, of me. That's how I feel about it. I won't insert, I won't talk about anybody else about me. I have absolutely sat at the table in negotiations. Mr. Lynn, I've sat with you at the table in negotiations in the past. And there has been representation by the city in the past, by the people that are representing, the very people that are going to be paying for this until the future. And we did a very good job of negotiating in the past. This is not a good job of negotiating from my perspective, from my perspective, okay? Because we have, what are we getting for it? Let's look at it from that perspective, Vice Mayor. We're getting drug testing. Shouldn't that just be automatic? Shouldn't we automatically have drug testing, uh, if, if there's a problem with one of our frontline of the, uh, uh, running, running around? We should be able to do that. That's, that's one of the things that we're getting here. That's a bargaining chip. And then the other things that we're getting, the, the, the best thing that I think that we are actually getting is the, the, uh, the information, the thing that we're doing with the, um, with the healthcare. That, I believe, was beneficial to the people. I, I do hand that to them. But the rest of it is very, very expensive with very little benefit coming back. So if you're asking me, we, we did a very good job when we had commissioners sitting at the bargaining table. We were not invited to the bargaining table. That did not happen. And we did not get this out to the public in a timely fashion. We were supposed to decide on this on Tuesday. It was released on Monday at, what, 5:00 PM? That's when it was released, and it was 125 pages. Is that fair to the public to be able to look at this and determine whether or not this is a good thing? To be able to contact you and me to say, hey, listen, I don't think this is a good idea? That's what we're supposed to be doing. We're supposed to be representing those, those, the public. And listen, I get it. I, I know that we have a union that is, you know, working on behalf of the firefighters, and God bless them. They deserve everything that they get. They do. They work hard. They're great people. They're, they make us look fantastic, and they're there for us when we need them the most. I, I have no problem with that. My issue is more with the process. This should have been a very transparent process for all to be able to see, for all to be able to, uh, you know, uh, comment about and because it is a very expensive, um, you know, uh, uh, addition that's going to be moving forward. Um, Deputy Vice Mayor, I'll hit you and then finalize it with, uh, Commissioner Casal, and then we'll go for, with, I know that everybody's been here long enough. We'll go for the, uh, um.
Very good. Very good, Mayor. Thanks. Thank you very much, Mayor. Uh, I had seen Commissioner Frankel's hand up. I was going to allow him to go first. Um, just wanted to kind of try to wrap it up. I believe that we are past due, and at a point in time, this city should be able to do more than chew gum and skip rope at the same time. This contract expired October the 1st. Why we were not negotiating in, um, I would say perhaps March? Well, the COVID came, and if we start saying you've got to do something before, you can't do a contract before an election. Well, the way Delray is going, we have two commissioners who are elected one year, and then three years, uh, the very next year, in this particular case, and I think it's going to continue that way, we are going to have the very next year where three more of our commissioners are going to be elected. So we have almost a two-year period where you may not be able to do anything. So I think this is not the time or the place to have this discussion. I think if we're going to change it, it will be after March the 9th, which is the time to do it. I again commend everyone for all of your hard work, and I thank you. And with that, I will say I am ready to vote.
All right. Well, let, let, let Commissioner Casal finish, and then we will vote.
Thanks. I just, just to point out, I don't come to these meetings to vote no on things. But my problem, and, you know, it started with Mr. Gressis. One of the first votes was on the last contract where we, there was no legal representation. And he wasn't allowed in the, in the negotiation. The union had a lawyer. The city didn't have our, you know, consultant representatives involved in the negotiation, and we knew that. And, and I was assured by Mr. Gressis in writing that that was a mistake that would not happen again. And then respectfully, Ms. Alvarez, when, you know, you started, you gave me this two-sheet paper about the collective bargaining process, and in this document, it says that labor council will participate. And we know because Mr. Norton was told us he didn't participate. And look, I just don't think it, 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 it makes the process concerning. I would never in my personal life sign a contract of this magnitude without a lawyer telling me what is good about it, what's bad about it, what we should do. And I don't know how we as residents, uh, look at the residents and say to them, it's okay that we didn't have a consultant working on the behalf of the residents in this process. I just don't think it's acceptable. I'm sorry. Thank you all again for all your time today.
Thank you. Can we have a motion, please?
Yes. I think it's very acceptable, by the way, because we do have attorneys. We do have city staff, and they're all very capable. Saved us a lot of money with the police contract three years ago and saved us a lot of money this time by not having unneeded outs, outside counsel. Um, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Casal?
No.
Mr. Bolston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Regrettably, no.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you all. Have a great, uh, couple of weeks. We'll see you afterwards in, at the, uh, C R, next CRA meeting if, uh, I guess we'll all be there anyway. Uh, and good luck. there anyway, uh, and good luck.